Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth, members and colleagues on City Council, city staff, invited guests, and friends. I want to welcome you to tonight's City Council meeting. And I would ask that each of you stand for a moment of silence, and afterwards, we will do the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask, at this time, that my colleagues, please note your presence electronically.
Seven members of City Council present.
Thank you, ma'am. And we do have the minutes of a special call meeting, January 22nd, 2024, a called meeting, and regular meeting on January 23rd, 2024, and a special call meeting, January 29th, 2024. Do I have a motion? Move adoption?
Second.
Dr. Whitaker, sure you have the floor?
Yes, sir. Requesting that the clerk change my closed session vote to know, I believe, that date she will have.
That is duly noted, sir. And, once again, we have a motion and a second. I would ask my colleagues to please vote electronically.
The minutes are adopted seven zero.
And Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker rules?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than any particular member of City Council's staff or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have now come to the item on the agenda, City Manager's Report, item 24-34. And, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance authorizing payment of S.C. S.C. funds from the tax sale of 602 Wakefield Drive to Jacqueline S. Williams, as authorized by Section 58.1-3967 of the Virginia Code, and appropriating the sum of $21,208.05 from the fund balance of the general fund to the FY 2024 general fund budget for said purpose.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. The question is for our city attorney in regards to the report back. The issue that I raised at the last meeting regarding the time period for how long will the additional funds that Ms. Williams was requesting, I know at one time we thought it was not going to be any funds. Then at our last meeting, it was 25%, and now it's 40%. So, how long will that 60% have to remain in escrow or whatever for the other heirs to state claim?
It remains there until it is claimed. There is a claim period that applies to these types of transactions that restrict certain limitations. But, once you fall within that claim period, that money must remain until it is claimed.
So, if the other heirs never step up, those funds just remain?
There are no provisions in our code for them to do anything but remain in the city's coffers.
Okay. Because I think that issue she raised that almost, what, two years ago, I believe?
Well, she purported to have reached out to this council two years ago, but there was no record of that. We checked with the clerk. And so, we presented it as if this was the first time it was presented.
Well, I thought she had interacted not with just council, but with the city, with the inquiry, with the city treasurer on this matter, and then she brought it to council. But, again, it just seems that there's something unfair about that just hanging out for all these years. And you're saying that's different from how other heir property is handled because it was a tax sale?
No, I'm not saying it's different. I'm just saying this particular statute that allows for it to be held in the general fund, it's not in the escrow, it's in the general fund, there is no other provision for it to be received by an heir other than through this claim process. And if it is never selected, it remains in the general fund.
Yeah. So, I think it's two different issues. But, because the issue that I'm speaking to is if an heir never comes forward, not whether, how long it remains into the account, but if an heir doesn't come forward.
I think I understand. It's just like if you had an account that had money in it, it's your money until you use it. And the funds remain in general fund, it doesn't change ownership or rightfulness to anyone else other than those heirs.
Right.
Within that claim period, the claim period really is the trigger for, which is what restricts when it can be received.
I'll follow back up. I'll follow back up with you because of how other properties have been handled.
Okay. Let's talk about that. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no more, we have a motion and a second, and it was open for discussion. Are there any other council colleagues who wish to discuss this matter? Seeing none, would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted seven zero.
Item 24-35. And, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
Yes. An ordinance increasing the social services fund budget in the total amount of $730,000 for the purpose of paying personnel costs by one, accepting supplemental funding in the amount of $233,600 from the Virginia Department of Social Services, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2024 social services fund budget; and two, reducing the non-departmental line item and increasing the transfer-to-other-funds line item in the FY 2024 general fund budget by $496,400, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2024 social services fund budget.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption?
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 24-36. And, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting two additional grant awards of $19,316 and $8,113 for the total amount of $27,429 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2024 Grants Fund to provide funding to operate local probation and pretrial services in the city of Portsmouth.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 24-37. And, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting participant payments in the amount of $14,000 and appropriating said funds in the sheriff's office category of the FY 2024 general fund budget for the operation of the Portsmouth Sheriff's Office Global Positioning System Monitoring Program.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption?
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 24-38. And, Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorizing the conveyance of an easement having a length of approximately 255 feet and a width of approximately 50 feet across property located adjacent to Route 460 to Columbia Gas Transmission LLC for the purpose of installing and maintaining gas utility facilities.
Thank you, ma'am. And we do have a registered speaker for this particular item. The speaker is Steve Martin. Mr. Martin, if you're available, if you would please come forward, state your name and address, sir. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, council. Steve Martin. Home address is Milford, New Hampshire. I work on the project out of an office at 1040 University Boulevard in Portsmouth. I did not register to be a speaker. I just came as a representative of Columbia Gas to answer any questions you guys might have.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt. Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Item 24-39. And, Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorizing the conveyance of an easement having a width of approximately 15 feet across property located at the intersection of Portsmouth Boulevard and East Washington Street to Virginia Electric and Power Company doing business as Dominion Energy Virginia for the purpose of installing and maintaining electric utility facilities.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption?
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted seven zero.
Item 24-40. And, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
An ordinance accepting children's community crisis stabilization services funding in the amount of $358,767 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, and appropriating said funds in the FY 2024 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund to provide comprehensive mental health and substance use services to children and adolescents.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Item 24-41. And, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance amending and reordaining Article 1 of Chapter 4 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, animals in general, by adding a new section, 4-14, for the purpose of prohibiting horses in public ways except in certain specific instances.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption?
Second.
And we do have one of my colleagues, our colleagues, who wishes to speak on this matter, Councilman Tillage. Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to get some background information on how this item came forward before I cast the vote.
Thank you for that. So, what we found is that over a weekend when we have events in the city, there seems to be some people who come in, they bring their horses from outside, I think as far as Winchester, what's the other place? Smithfield. So, they mount their horses, and they ride their horses down our city streets with no permit, no anything. The last instance, they actually rode their horses on city streets, and they left a mess for our citizens to clean up. And so, what happens is, as we look through city code to try to determine, why are you picking the city of Portsmouth versus all the other cities that you pass through in the meantime? We didn't have anything specific to people controlling their horses in the city street public roadways. And there was nothing to require them to clean up, even behind themselves. So, we wanted to put some language specific in place for those instances where they are prohibited from riding their horses in our city streets, with the exception of police, of course.
Got you. I just wanted to know before I cast the vote. Thank you.
And we have a motion, and we have a second. And are there any additional comments on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have now come to the item new business, item 24-42, boards and commissions. And Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, do we have anything for vote boards and commissions?
Not at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 24-43, items submitted by council members. And, Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution that we are considering under items submitted by council?
Yes, sir. A resolution to cancel the regular meeting of City Council scheduled for March 14, 2024.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six one.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other items submitted by council? Dr. Whitaker, sure you have the floor?
Yes, sir. First, I want to thank our interim city manager for taking care of the Truxton 105th Anniversary Issue that Mr. Chester Benton presented to us, and appreciate your expeditious handling of that. Also, I would like to get an update, well, not an update, but from our city attorney. Now that you have given us a response to the Sugar Hill, and you've, in your report, you outlined several remedies that other localities, I would like for our council to give a consensus on there being a task force that is formed to make a recommendation to this council on the remedies that we would use. Also, I would like to add in that consensus that there be some funding provided for legal assistance with that task force, particularly with persons who were residents of Sugar Hill, to be able to have some legal advice as we move towards that remedy. And if that's something that we can have some direction from legal counsel at our next meeting as far as establishing that, if that's the consensus of council.
Okay. Ma'am, did you have any comments that you wanted to make?
Nope. I understand what he's asking.
Okay. Very good. So, we have a request for consensus about the information that was presented for discussions about potential remedies. And I know we still have some other speakers, so we'll let them speak, and then we'll call for the consensus. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to ask Madam Clerk if this is the appropriate time for us to issue the notice of closed meetings?
I would say after you finish the item on the consensus, you can come back.
Yes. Thank you.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Yes. I'd call on Councilman Whitaker to restate the consensus. I'm a little confused as to exactly what the consensus pertains to.
Yes. The city attorney issued a report back that was received in our emails today regarding the Sugar Hill issue. As you know, I requested, looking at the remedies that could be instituted to address that situation. So, in her report back, she gave us an examination of other cities that have also had remedies put in place to address past historical discrimination in particular areas. And so, something like that would require a task force to make a recommendation to council as to what possible remedies would be. And also, the other part of that consensus is that there be funds set aside for legal representation on that task force of those citizens of Sugar Hill, because they would have to have some type of legal representation, and it shouldn't be that they have to incur it because of actions that were purposefully conducted by the city. And so, to help with giving some guidance, and that's what the second part of that consensus is.
I got a couple of questions. One from the city attorney. Have you expressed the opinion that remedy is in order for Sugar Hill?
No, I just listed the options that have been made available, and that that would be a decision for council to decide after reviewing them.
So, it's an if situation?
It's an if situation.
What's preventing from making the final determination on that?
It's not a decision for the city attorney's office to make. It's a decision for council to decide based on the information that's been presented to you whether a wrong and/or a remedy is appropriate. I've laid out the groundwork, what would be required, what the parameters would be for the state and the localities. It's now a matter of you all evaluating that and deciding.
And this pertains to the wall?
This pertains to the historical information presented by Cassandra Newby Alexander as to?
Right. To the property?
Correct. Yep.
And the impact of the?
There were a number.
Martin Luther King Expressway?
That's right. Yes, sir.
Okay. But no determination has been made on that? That's entirely up to council?
Entirely up to council.
Right.
Entirely up to council, within the parameters that I've noted by law.
I'm all right with the first part of it. I don't know about funding, paying for attorneys that, in essence, will be suing the city. Is that, am I misreading that?
Yes. What I'm speaking to, there's going to be recommendations that that task force, and that task force should have input from persons who have been impacted by what the city did on Sugar Hill. They should have the benefit of some legal representation within that task force, not that this is something outside of the task force, of an attorney representing them in some suit. That's not what I'm speaking to. I'm just saying, they should, given what the city and what we have uncovered, that they should have some type of legal representation within that task force.
Got you. Okay.
So, we have the request for consensus, and I just want to be clear for all the citizens. Certainly, this is a very important matter, and we need to look at it from all angles. And I think what Dr. Whitaker is requesting as a task force is a good place to start. I think getting people together to understand if there were illegal actions or whatever that has taken place, it's important that we know that. So, I am certainly in agreement of a task force, but at the end of the day, I think there's a lot more work that has to be done based on what was presented to us in the report back. And so, if everyone is in agreement with that, I would just ask that you give a show of hands for consensus for a task force to present information and move forward in that regard.
And, Vice Mayor, just to make sure, I don't know what the legal issues are as far as forming that task force. That's why I'm asking the city attorney to report back to us what we would need to do to put that in place.
Absolutely. And I think that's fair. And so, we will wait for the response from the city attorney in how we should proceed with such a request. So, if everyone would show by hand to support that consensus, we'll move on. Thank you, sir.
Right. And my second issue is in regards to the disparity study and the recommendations that came out of it. Just want to find out from the city manager or the city attorney, where are we on updating contracts to have auditing language, and also the penalty language for noncompliance? And if you're not prepared to answer that, you can report that back.
We'll report that back.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are there any other items submitted under council? Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to submit a notice of closed meeting. The City Council of the City of Portsmouth pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.23712B shall conduct one or more closed meetings for the sole purpose of interviewing candidates for the position of city manager at an undisclosed location within 15 days of this notice. The City Council of the City of Portsmouth will reissue this notice should the need arise to conduct additional closed-meeting interviews for the position of city manager after the expiration of the 15-day period.
Members of council, it does not require a motion or a second for this notice. It's just notification for the public.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Whitaker, sure you have?
Yeah. There was one more issue, and that is the update. I've been getting calls, the update on the car fire that occurred on January 17th at the corner of Effingham and Lincoln. We haven't received a report back on that. I know there was supposed to have been some update, possibly a closed session.
Right. We're going to have to do that in a closed session. We wanted to wait until a full year response had been fulfilled. That's been fulfilled, and so, we can provide that to you in a closed session at the next meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have one item. As you all are aware, it is African-American History Month, the month of February, and I would like to share with you one of our African-American heroes of Portsmouth, Virginia. Dr. Mueborn, Helen Mueborn Watts, born in 1919, was the first black female physician in Portsmouth, Virginia. For many years, she was the only black female physician in Tidewater. She was a graduate of IC Norcom High School. She attended Howard University's College of Liberal Arts and College of Medicine, from which she was awarded the BS and MD degrees. She did intern work and resident work at Harlem Hospital in New York City. She maintained an office on High Street. She was a member of the Portsmouth Medical Society, the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, the Moes, the Lynx, and was on the staff of the Norfolk Community Hospital. She married Wilbur O. Watts, an attorney, who maintained a law office at County and Effingham Streets in Portsmouth, Virginia. Dr. Mueborn died in 1953. Thank you. Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, just a reminder to our neighbors that Chief Jenkins is hosting the public meeting of Portsmouth United. It's this Thursday night, night after next, at 6:00 p.m. at 206 High Street. So, if you have ideas on how to tackle crime in the city and the systemic issues So if you have ideas on how to tackle crime in the city and the systemic issues around crime, I invite you to join the chief and others at that meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. We have now moved to the next item. Item, Dr. Whitaker, sir.
Yeah, I would like to just say, and given what you were saying about black history, I would like to say to our students and also other citizens that they would really go back and read up on Dr. Carter G. Woodson, who was the founder of what was originally Negro History Week, and it ultimately became Black History Month. I would challenge you to look at the context out of which Dr. Carter G. Woodson started Negro History Week. It was not to identify and lift up certain accomplishments of blacks who had achieved, but it was actually to assess how much history we have not been informed on, and then for the following months, educating ourselves. So I would challenge us to understand the context out of which Black History Month was started. It was looking at the degradation, the lynching, the killings that was occurring, and it was a way of trying to also lift up, from a historical context, those things. And so I challenge us to really keep Black History Month in the context in which it was originally thought of, and that was to educate ourselves as not seeing black history as something separate from American history, but it is actually blacks in history. And so I just wanted to lift that up.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to the next item, report on pending items. You have any pending items, ma'am?
No. No, ma'am, I don't.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item on the agenda, item 24-45, non-agenda speakers. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the non-agenda speaker rules?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address counsel on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the form and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than to any particular member of City Council staff or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first speaker tonight, George W. Sir, if you state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
GW Thompson. I live at 4065 Windy Brow Drive here in Portsmouth, Virginia. I'd say good evening to the City Council. I would like any members of Virginia organizing, a group in which I'm a member. We advocate for the homeless and other issues, and also a couple of members of my church, I would ask them to stand at this time. Thank you, you may be seated. First, I'm most thankful for the services that the nonprofit Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless provides under the able leadership of Dr. Darlene Washington, who was recently recognized for her efforts in addressing the needs of the homeless community. The shelter that PVH provides has a capacity of 20 people, and it is currently at capacity. According to Dr. Woodard, Director of Behavioral Healthcare Services, the point-in-time count of the homeless population for the City of Portsmouth, conducted by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, is under 45. Even with the services that Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless provides, there remains 20 to 30 unsheltered individuals in need of a safe, warm place to stay during inclement weather. Prior to the pandemic, when there was inclement weather such as snow, a drastic drop in temperature, or a storm, the city would open a shelter to house the homeless during those times. The pandemic impacted a lot of services due to health concerns. Dr. Washington informed me that during the fall, the city's Emergency Operations Center, in partnership with PVH, created a plan to provide temporary shelter when temperatures dropped below a certain point. These clients would be housed in PVH's overnight shelter. She further stated that the police and fire department would be responsible for transporting these individuals to the shelter. Unfortunately, the timeframe for this plan was limited to one week. My church, Zion Baptist, under the leadership of Dr. Kevin E. Turner, in partnership with Ebenezer Baptist Church and Dr. Leroy Hill, provides breakfast for the homeless three days a week, and the Oasis Social Ministries provides breakfast the other days. Oasis also provides lunch every day for this population. I serve as one of the volunteers for this ministry. Last year, several homeless people brought to my attention the fact that there was not an emergency shelter available during inclement weather, or they were not aware of one. In past years, prior to the pandemic, there would be a public service announcement in the media to inform the public of shelter locations. Pre-pandemic, local churches rotated housing the homeless, but the pandemic impacted this ministry due to health concerns. City Council, you are to be commended for your efforts in partnering with Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless and other community partners in the initiative to build a permanent shelter for the homeless. Dr. Woodard informed me that timeline for building the shelter is between 24 and 36 months. I am here to ask, until the permanent shelter is built, will there be a designated emergency shelter that will have capacity to house the unsheltered in the event of a weather event? Secondly, and how will I and the public know what the plan is? Thirdly, will this plan be publicized through the media, and who is the contact person? Finally, I ask that this be an agenda item at the next City Council meeting so that this information can be distributed to community service providers. Publicizing this information will be a benefit to all who serve and encounter our homeless brothers and sisters. I would like to note that Dr. Woodard and Dr. Washington were extremely helpful in providing me with this information. I asked some of our homeless clients what was it like sleeping outside. Here are a few of their quotes. "You must sleep with one eye open and one eye closed." "It is dangerous. Someone can sneak up on you." "There are no facilities to use the restroom." "I have friends who helped me at times, but I do not want to take advantage of them." "You can pick up bad habits because you think nobody cares." "There are people out here with mental illness. Some people think we want to be homeless. There are times when the shelter is full. I could stay with my daughter, but I do not want her to get in trouble with the housing authority." "You need two blankets and something to keep your knees warm." And I leave you with this quote, "The time is always right to do what is right," by Martin Luther King. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
So the city manager, can we get an update on that time period that was mentioned, 24 to 36 months, on the shelter?
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Nicole Adams. Mr. Adams, if you would come forward and state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Good evening. I'm Nicole Adams. I live at 35 Fraley Place in Portsmouth, Virginia. I came to express my concern and disappointment regarding the lack of decorum in our City Council meetings, and to urge the council to adopt a more compassionate and effective approach at addressing our unhoused and inadequately housed citizens, one that does not rely on police intervention. Firstly, I would like to acknowledge the importance of City Council meetings as a platform for diplomatic discourse and decision-making. However, recent incidents have reaffirmed concerns about decorum and professionalism exhibited here during these meetings. It's crucial that our elected representatives set an example of respectful communication and collaboration, fostering an environment conducive to constructive dialogue. There was a lot of yelling, point of order in the last meeting, but it seems the major point was missed. We can't reinforce negative stereotypes about our city. Now, turning to the issue of the underhoused, it's evident that our community is facing a pressing challenge that requires immediate attention. In October 2023, on Shea Street, a man died in a tent fire while he was inside. When I was walking on High Street over this past summer, I discovered that my own brother was unhoused and on the streets. The resources that I currently know of are through Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless. They offer shelter nightly, November through May. The Herd Shelter offers assistance to women and children. The Restore Shelter has 25 beds for families, and there are these vague plans for a shelter on County Street, but I have not heard a proposed start time, and that only has about 25 beds from what I'm told. What about during the summer? What about single individuals? What about the details for the plan for the new shelter? In June of 2023, we adopted an ordinance for $569,000 to the Shelter Plus Care Program, which is through Portsmouth Behavioral Health. In a 2021 report, I found that that program was at capacity. However, all of the funds from last fiscal year were not used by Portsmouth Behavioral Health, so I'm hoping that you can ensure that these funds are used fully and efficiently. I was also told that the police officers have been trained to offer shelter to people that they see on the streets if they are willing, but do we really think that that's happening? I've been to countless City Council meetings where we talk about our police officers being understaffed and needing more and more pay for them. So is this realistic? And then from a trauma-informed standpoint, this is not the most compassionate or effective solution to address our housing crisis. It's essential that City Council explore alternative approaches that prioritize rehabilitation and long-term solution. I propose that City Council focus on affordable housing initiatives that would provide long-term solutions to the underhoused and immediate solutions while the shelter is still in the works. I strongly believe that by adopting a more comprehensive and compassionate approach, our city can become a model for effectively addressing the inadequately housed. I'm hopeful that together, we can work together to create a positive change. If not, I am a part of several community groups, such as the Community Action Team, and we look forward to holding our elected officials accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cheryl Bryant.
How you guys doing?
Good, how are you, ma'am?
I'm doing all right.
If you would state your name and address, you'll have five minutes.
Cheryl Bryant, and I'm a resident of Portsmouth.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Well, I would like to say this. You know, people getting street names, I feel that there's a lot of crime going on in Portsmouth, and that, you know, since those cases is not being, you know, resolved at a fashion or letting people know what's going on with the status of it, I feel that anybody that lost their lives due to violence in Portsmouth should be on the name of the streets, downtown Portsmouth. That's the first thing. The second thing, as far as housing and juvenile detention center, I really feel, and I'm pretty sure that people can agree, that that should have been taken care of way before anything else. We speak, we come in here every two weeks, every Tuesday, and it's the same thing. It just seems like a whole lot of nothing is being done. If you need oil in your car to get it up and running, why are you buying tires? You know, I had sent out a massive email, and I don't know if you guys even took a chance to take a look at it, but since we all here, I take the time to read it. "The city of Portsmouth has a terrible reputation. We hit number one, referred to Google, for the most dangerous cities to stay in. That's ridiculous, but at least we hit one on something. When an individual thinks of the city of Portsmouth, tough images of slums come to mind. Take a ride through it. I have seen individuals of the community, including myself, express themselves about crime, housing issues, homelessness issues, taxes, redevelopment suggestions, budgeting, questions and concerns of school safety. And we walk in worser than when we walk out. And I just don't understand what's the whole point of having a meeting if we really don't get to say so on what y'all adopting." So with that being said, I have took the time over the past few years, and people really need to not just have shelter, they need to have a generational change in their lives. Putting them into a shelter and not structuring them is not helping nobody. It's actually putting the city in more debt, to be honest. I think that my program that I have, Motivational Plus Organization, will be coming and sending a little earthquake of vibes, of good energy, positivity, and structure. So if anybody wants to know more about it, you can look on my Facebook, under Cheryl Bryant, C-H-E-R-Y-L-B-R-Y-A-N-T. I also have a women's group, Independent Women of Power. And I also have a group that I'm trying to get implemented in the school systems, Mindset Supporters. And I just recently started a men's group, M-M-E-O, and that stands for Manifestation of a Extraordinary Man. Because I feel that some men do get, you know, sidelined and not paid any attention to, and everybody goes through depression and have some type of struggles in life. Nobody's perfect. So I just feel that it needs to be changed. I think that you guys need to start being more observant to what the people are saying and also responding. Because that message was sent out, I could, if you weren't going to do anything or say anything, I at least could have got a response where I just don't want to help you. I'd rather for somebody to be real than be nothing at all. You shouldn't have to show face or be in a mix when it's election time or it's beneficial. It's phony and it's fake. So you guys have my contact information. Mr. Hill, I cannot attend that Thursday, but I'm more than welcome to be involved in it. So maybe if you guys are open, you can contact me. But either way, Motivational Plus is coming and giving people an opportunity of a generational change. And I am working with the state of North Carolina for Portsmouth residents if they want that change in my 18-month program. So you guys have a blessed day and wait for the thunder.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mr. Leon Hammonds. Mr. Hammonds, if you would come forward, state your name and address, sir. You will have five minutes. Good evening, sir.
Leon Hammonds, Bowie Court. I thought this was a new year, but it seemed like it was a carryover from last year as far as hiring people. The article that, as far as the tax assessor, it seemed like it reflects from last year some of your hiring. Now, I know the City Council should have some final say-so over different hiring, well, top-tier hiring. Now, I don't understand why it was a rush to try to hire someone without fully venting them. I don't know who does the venting or what, but from the newspaper article, that was a shame to offer that person the job. It makes the City Council, makes the city look bad. It really does, and anybody that voted for him makes them look bad, too. And you need to stop and ask questions, ask the right questions, ask more questions, really dig into it, because we don't need to hire anybody that has baggage. See, same way, we got enough people that have baggage out there that don't need to come here. And I don't understand why people have a big rush to try to hire that person, because from DC to wherever else it was. Yep, from DC. I mean, anytime you mess up in DC, something's wrong, because it has a lot more, it has a lot more to do than here. It's more, more money. And then when you got other legal problems, there's harassment charges against you, too. No, you need to have, now, you all can have a- No, you need to have, now, you all can have a qualified person to be telling you about the previous person, the interim person, but you need to have a qualified person be telling you about the one you're trying to hire. See, because it's not, it's not right for the public. I'm getting tired of it myself. I am really getting tired of it, because the city, the city of Portsmouth is in the wrong headlines. It's in the wrong headlines, and we're staying in the wrong headline. We're starting out in the wrong headlines. So take your time on hiring anybody you hire on the upper echelon. See, I don't care who it is, but take your time. You're going this long without, you can go a little longer. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hammonds. Our next, our next speaker is Barry Randall Jenkins. If you would come forward, sir, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
She might end. I was informed that she wasn't speaking, sir. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of Council at large, Madam Manager, Madam City Attorney, and Madam Clerks. I come in peace now. Right before 5:00, the manager reached out and you all know, oh, and Barry Randall Jenkins, Brighton, Prince Park section of the city. Anyway, she handled it. I spoke with the citizen, and he said he wants to give the manager a chance to do what she needs to do. And I look forward to speaking with your deputy after council meeting or if they just need to call. But I was gonna let Ms. Deborah know to just take me off, but then I thought about it. I'd use this opportunity to share with you all. Next Monday, I'm having a town hall forum at the Prince of Peace Church at 6:00 PM. The church is located at 1543 Summit Avenue here in the city of Portsmouth. Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Burke will be joining me. It's not a political forum, it's an opportunity. I have some individuals from the city, government, church, and community that will be there, that will be asking, will be sharing their ideas to the mayor and the vice mayor about some positive things we can do here in the city. You all know, and I served as the Brighton Prince Park president, the number one, unfortunately, after being at Elvira Civic League meeting the other day and how her area's all cleaned up, and the police didn't have nothing to report over there. So I'm glad I'm a member of her civic league as well. But I look forward to us getting Brighton and Prince Park in that same facet. So again, next Monday, we're just gonna be coming together just so that we can, you know, talk, positive talk. You can say what you want to say, we know the issues that we have here in the city of Portsmouth. But there's no other city, county, or locale government in the whole state of Virginia that have individuals at the top positions in the state from any other city than the city of Portsmouth, Virginia. And with the extra revenue that we're getting in from the casino, I think we need to build upon that platform. And I'm speaking about Dr. Cardia Patillo, who is the president of the Virginia State School Board Association, of course Senator Lucas and the position that she's in over appropriation and finance, as well as Senate Pro temp. And also Don Scott has been the House Speaker of the House. And I think that we really need to rally around that. I know this isn't an election year. So out of respect for candidates that wasn't asked to be on this particular program, I'm only allowing the mayor and the vice mayor to bring anything up politically or what they want to share their platform, anything like that. I think out of respect for the two of them of giving us their time that night, that's the least I can do for the two of them. But nobody else can talk anything politics, because we not there to take a side and all that. At the end of the day, whether the mayor win or vice mayor win, we need to rally around them to make Portsmouth a beautiful, beautiful city. So again, you all can breathe, because I come in peace. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Elvira Johnson Williams. Ma'am, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes. Good evening.
My name is Elvira Johnson Williams, and I live in North Truckston. That's part of Portsmouth. Like Barry Randall, I come in peace. I'm not gonna lay you out tonight, because I want to, but I want to give you some good news tonight. The city of Portsmouth is having a citywide cleanup on March the 23rd of this year. And I have been thinking about it a long time because of the cleanup that we did last year around March the 18th, it was such a success. Well, this year, I went a little bit further and went directly to Mr. Roy Colby. He is the CEO, general manager of the casino. And I asked him, would it be possible for them to team up with us as we clean our city? My little idea kinda went sorta like Green Lakes, Elizabeth Minor, wherever, from 264 towards Airline Boulevard, we'll meet at City Park. And then the ones on our end, Brighton, Prince Park, Truckston, Wilson Ward, I think it's Shea Terrace, Parkview, West Parkview, all of those can meet us at the casino at 8:00 AM. There, we talked some more, and I got with Melissa Ramsey, who is Human Resuscitation Director, whatever. But they will serve pastries and coffee at 8:00, when we get started. Now, once we get started, my plan is to have them go back to their neighborhood, Mr. Randall Jenkins. To go back to your own neighborhoods, clean it up. Make sure that everyone knows. Now, this year, I believe we got orange bags for trash, and this time, we're gonna ask people, please don't put them bags in your cars, put them on designated corners, and I will be getting with, everybody in Portsmouth got my phone number, so just call me, so that I can get with Ms. Mary Watson over at Waste Management and Mr. Amos Taylor, I think, and Stallins, and Stallins. I'm getting it right, because everything is just off the top of my head right now. So we gonna clean up our city, because everybody, I'm so sick of people telling me how nasty Portsmouth is, and I ride through Norfolk and I see what I see. So apparently, we are the only ones that got a problem. We so low down on the totem pole, we can't even be noticed on the weather forecast for Portsmouth. When they talk about weather in Portsmouth, they say, "Cradle." So we gonna, we gonna try to make Portsmouth number one in this respect. After you finish cleaning up your neighborhood, I'm asking you to go back to the casino so that you can have a lunch, because Mr. Colby has confirmed with me, along with Melissa, and he's the one that gave the order, that we will have a box lunch. Now, you can't take any outside food in the casino, therefore, you will be meeting us at the event center. You will not go in the casino with food. Please don't, don't do that. But I think it's commendable that Rivers wants to be on this cleanup with us, March the 23rd. So I'm asking all residents of Portsmouth to come. As I was quoted, it's been told to me that God blesses others and he takes orders from me. Rain or shine, we will be out there cleaning up trash in the city of Portsmouth, in your community. And yes, Mr. Randall is, has a point. We do have a pretty good clean neighborhood, because we get out there and clean it up ourselves. We don't wait for city workers to come and do it, we do it ourselves. And that's all it takes to just get started to clean up the city. Because see, once your neighbor get tired of looking at this Yard of the Month or Community of the Month sign, they're gonna get jealous and they're gonna clean up. I know it works, because I do it all the time with the Yard of the Month sign. So please, everybody up there, especially, come out and be seen. Got a lot of seats open for reelection. You want people to see you? They wanna see what you do, and they wanna hear something positive out of you. So on that note, I'm gonna say, have a blessed one, Happy New Year's to those I haven't seen. Be blessed, stay blessed, and let's clean up our city. Good night.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Hugh will show you a floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, Ms. Elvira, thanks for organizing. The mayor and I had a chance to go visit the carrier George H.W. Bush, which just arrived at Norfolk Naval Shipyard a month or so ago. The carrier leadership shared with us their community involvement program that they call Thousand Points of Light. And the commanding officer told both of us that he is interested in getting his sailors connected with the community to do community service. And so I'll follow up with the point of contact that we got from the ship and let them know what you're doing, and we'll, we'll see if we can get some support from the Thousand Points of Light program from George H.W. Bush to participate that Saturday.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Mr. Clyde Toler. Sergeant Major.
Good evening, everyone. Portsmouth proud. Clyde Toler, 1029 Blair Street, Portsmouth. I live in Parkview. Miss White, come on over, please. You ain't gotta be bashful. I'm old, they ain't gonna hurt you. To Miss White, I'm bringing to you black history. Well, not say black, color, color of history. I like that both better. But anyway, she is the first one to be a clerk and be here for about 36 years with me. I may have more, but she be here 36 years. And I want everybody to know, she is the first person of a color to hold this position. Sister Morrison is the second one in her jar. I hope her with her campaign. But this lady here has stood great in the city for this council, counsellor before you, but this has been a very special person. And I think she should be in the running, top running of this city as being the first. And Happy Valentine to you, sweetheart. And wait, I'm gonna hand you back.
Thank you.
I wanted to say to the sister city man and Mr. Woods, you could stand up. I won't drug them, but I fell in the yard in the rain, and he picked me up. I had to hurry up and get up so people wouldn't think I was drinking white lightning, you know, and got messed up. But anyway, I came to Portsmouth in 1947 from the United States Army. Young man had been to Germany, Belgium, and France. And I came back, I came here, visited, went to the beach with some gentlemen that I knew in the service. I came back here again in 1953, and I stayed to 1961. I played in the Marine Corps Band out there at Martha Park, as they call it. But I want to say to this city, I knew some great people in this city, like Big Joe Turner, Holly, White Hurst. I can name a lot of them. I know a lot of your grandfathers, I know some of your fathers, too. They are passing, gone on. But the white lightning in the morning, the white lightning, they keep you going, so I'm still here. I ain't gonna take long, Mayor, I ain't forgot what you said the last time. Hurry up and get away, so you get home to your wife, so he a good guy. So he go Navy. But this city is a great city. It's got, when I came in Portsmouth, you had two theaters, you had a black bank, so is Danville, Virginia, where I grew up here. It's the last black bank, they say that it is, it's on Spring Street and Danville Union, colored bank, they say it's the last. But I told them that Portsmouth had a bank, too. So I think the news media looking up on that, so they might be getting in touch with you, Mayor, but they'll find out. But I've been to Portsmouth, I've been to some everything, but I want to thank this city for Veterans Day, that you honored me. And thank you, each and every one of you, for what you did. It made me proud, and I felt good that you did this for me. I'm a World War II veteran, Korea, and Vietnam. I seen a lot of hard times, I seen a lot of good times, born on in your reservation. You ain't know that, did you? But that's where I came from, Pennsylvania County, Blue Ridge Mountain. But it's good to be here, and each and every one of you sitting up here during this time, we have people like Copeland in ACP. We had three schools, two, two good schools here. It was, I think one of them was Peabody. Yeah, they always on South Street where that little white, where that little library was, before they moved it over there in the churchyard and all. We had some great ministers here, like Jordan, Reverend Twine, Bishop Twine, on the Church of Hill County, about almost 115 years old, I think. They only had three pastors. Twine, and they had, they got the one there, Reverend Porter, he comes here now once in a while. And Tyler, I think that's the only black church in this city. I know the one down there, the African church of Bill, but it's the only church that only had three pastors. And Porter is the one there, he's the number three. And I think that you should know that in history, he comes here, that me and Miss White got to come here to do the application for you, but you're doing a good job. I hate to see people come up here and disrespect me, because I look at the TV and I see all these other cities on there, and I don't like what I see the way we act. Portsmouth, I ask you for to be more polite, because you was sitting up here, you wouldn't want nobody to be disrespectful to you. So I want you to stop being ugly when you come up here. Thank you.
The next speaker is Mr. Cedric Cradle. Mr. Cradle, sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address, you will have
Cedric Cradle, 725 Bow Street. Good evening, Mayor, city councils, city attorney, chief. With it being Black History Month, I wanted to come up here and talk about Martin Mego, Emmett, and say some positive things that they've done, or that they did to impact the lives of so many of African-Americans. But it's hard for me to do that, especially after talking to so, so many parents of African, African-American kids who won't be able to see their kid become a Martin, who won't be able to see their kid become a Mego, who won't be able to see their kid become a Malcolm, because of the unfortunate of them dying of gun violence. And I know it's getting, it gets old to some of you guys, and we try to act like the mood is not what it is, but Portsmouth is not okay. Our population in Portsmouth, based on the census, is 96,000, 95,000 people, 48,000 thousand people, forty-eight thousand people being African Americans. Twenty-two percent of those are below the poverty level. I looked at the, um, the Bloomberg Harvard Report, I looked at the disparity study, I looked at the crime prevention plan, or crime reduction plan. And all of it showed me that I can come up here, hoop and holler, and all I want about this organization and this organization, I need this, but I'm telling you here to everybody's face, economics is an issue in the black community. Economics is the reason for the violence that is being, that's causing these communities. Portsmouth is fifty percent black, African American, however you want to see it. It shouldn't be this many blacks killing blacks. But again, we're a predominant of black city, so you're gonna see that. But when you see the disparity, but nothing's being done, it sound good. Sounds good about the four hundred cameras that were supposed to be in place already, but what happened? So again, I'm not gonna get up here and hoop and holler, because I still, we had six homicides this year already. That means we won't pace for forty-eight, which I hope won't occur. And despite what people feel about me, the issues are still the issues. And it's unfortunate. So again, we need to invest in quality economic opportunities to reduce, uh, crime in disadvantaged black neighborhoods. We need to put funding into evidence-based practices, not just organizations that say, I can do this and I can do that, or I'm friends with this person or that person. You won't get no resolution. But you don't have to pay attention to me, because I've been coming down here for three years and I've seen the same thing happening. I heard somebody on the news say something, or at the city council say that we can't do nothing about theirs home. Well, they saying the same thing in Palestine, that they can't do nothing. So that means this homicide is gonna keep occurring. That's a problem, people. I applaud the Chief of Police for his efforts, but he shouldn't be engaged in so much of this intervention with crime. But again, I applaud the chief, I really do. Because you cannot have weekend warriors to fight this fight. It's impossible to fight this fight. But, but again, I'm just saying. And my list that I'm about to say is the hundred and over forty names who have died in the city of Portsmouth besides one of homicide or gun violence. Charles Mosley, Corey Tur, Antonio Atkins, Timothy Beal, he died in Hampton, he's from Portsmouth. Emmanuel Tur, Jeffrey Basemore, Jaquan Johnson, Carlton Dodd, Tashik Wolf, Anthony Skeeter, Requon Morgan, Natasha Hicks, Jamelle Howard, Darian Granger, Amaje Lee, Demar Mitchell, Lakeisha Smith, DeAndre Morrison, Joshua Sykes, Antoine Wiggins, Talique Farmer, Vernon O'Neal, Yashin Kerway, James Hill, Dante Copeland, Robert Artis, Malcolm Hoskins, Javon Williams, Kamaja Howard, DeQuan Epps, Omar Booker, Robert, Robert Langston, Nicholas Suggs, Richard Tucker, Timothy Shine, Brian Williams, Maquell, Curtis Walton, Kyrie Thomas, William Seffrich, Colston Baines, Antonio Brunch, Curtis Richardson, Andre Hall, Kiara, Victor Green. Mr. Mayor, can I finish off? Thank you, sir. David Branch, Lawrence Kofa, Crystal Jacobs, Derek Parker, Demetrius White, Boobie Staten, Malani Everett, Amari Collins, Andrea Bethay, Kareen Borchet, Rodney Anderson, Gary Fields, Jamod Mitchell, Keith Warren, Requon Gray, Deion Lofton Jr., Georgia Devonte Lee, Olisia DeAmir, Ashley Merricks, Robert Parker, Dalen Spence, Terrence Johnson, Devon Crosby, Tyrell Jones, Ariam McLaren, Josavia Hill, Keandre Jenkins, John Plummer Jr., Bernard Clack, Maze Moon, Anthony Brown, Brown, Jaquan White, Crystal Washington, Clifton Privet, Ashante Britt, Lamont Brown, Donald Thornton, Calvin Costin, Desiree Lightfoot, Tiante Clark, Ronnie Turin, Jesse Hall, Johnny Freeman, Jamal Barnes, Corey Harris, Mashik Burden, William Jones, Ralph Harris, Kiana Bailey, Evelyn Blaze, Melvin Bynum, Samuel Jones, Naquan Madison, Shaquilla Branch, Clifton Hampton, Romell Shroud, Givante Martin, Marquise Freeman, I'm sorry, Terrence Palmer Jr., Lee Sawyer, Alvin Joyner, Calvin Joyner, Terry Miller, Jordan Snipes, Glenn Wallace, Tyree McPherson, Albert Henderson, Elijah, Elazira Selby, Elijah Johnson, Carlos Cordova, Carlos Castro Morella, Tyler Bardell, Liam Fox, Jason Randolph, Michael Roberts, Rocco Nixon, David Williams Jr., James Rocket III, Victor Driver, Kyrie Scott, Keith Wright, Obie Holloway, Erica Atkins, Maurice Brown, Arthur House, Edward Santafield, Zachary Rye, Cardwell, Robert Moore, Kyrie Johnson, Dario Mundon, Teantre Baker, Amari Green, Earl Martin Sr., Chardonnay Wilson, and Johnny Burden. Black history is not over.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next, our next speaker is Sheila Joseph. Ms. Joseph, if you would come forward, state your name and address. Ma'am, you will have five minutes.
One thirty-nine Grand Street in Portsmouth, Virginia. I wanted to talk a little bit about January the twenty-second, when the EPA, CDC, and Environment of Justice was here, when y'all was over having your emergency meeting. I got an opportunity to speak to the people about how I talked about the leaded pipes in the sewage and different drain, storm drain issues. And I took a lot of pictures. No one so far have sit down and say, well, I'd love to see what's going on in our city. It would give you a great impact on looking at these pictures, but the EPA summed it up when they was here from December the fourth, and a lot of people didn't know about it. I received the letter on the twenty-second of December. And so I have been on Environmental Justice, EPA, and different other outreach Zoom and discussed about the things that we are dealing with in the city of Portsmouth. Thank the lady, Ms. Vero, talking about cleaning up, that was one of the issues. But I was talking about the flooded streets, how in different neighborhoods that I have pictures showing that it's like a river and it's not even a storm. I had people to come in from Northern Virginia. It's kind of hard to bring people together that live in the city to sit down and say, Sister Joseph, I would like to see what you're talking about. But I turned around and talked to a lot of people that night, and they was talking about the same thing when they heard me talk about cancer and I mentioned about Camp Majune. And this is an issue not just in Camp Majune, but throughout the United States. But Portsmouth have the highest cancer rate. And Mr. Tillett mentioned something about it, that he looked into those issues and then someone else had gave me some information. Well, it's a lot of people that I have talked to and they willing to work with me, but they happen to be way from out of town. But I want to see the citizens and the churches and the different organizations to address the issues that we had in Washington Park and the shipyard and over by South Side and a whole lot of other areas. I do have the maps of the different areas that has the impact, but I didn't get it way from Portsmouth. I got it way from out of town, people that understand what's going on about the Super Fund. A lot of people died, including in my family, and studied dying with cancer. And we listed things on my website, and I'm gonna give it to those that want to get the facts of what I'm talking about, maybe you'll get more involved. W W dot T W C M A D online dot com. And when you go, I ask people to please, if you're gonna call me at seven five seven, five seven four twenty-five ninety-one, please use a picture to attach to your number and your emails, because I'm getting emails from out of town. And also, it's very important to me to be able to see who I'm talking to. And together, we can make a difference about bringing people together to address the issue in our city. And I'm not gonna hold the leaders one hundred percent accountable, because there was a lot of things happened before they got in the seat. And all the ones that's in the seat now, all I'm asking for to pick up and let's sit down and communicate as a community, the leaders, the community, and different walks of life being impacted. I won't do anything else to, uh, say about this issue anymore. I'll just keep writing on my website, and anybody take the time to read it, and they want to get involved. We'll be doing a campaign, public awareness, and we asking for people to get involved in that. It'll be on TV, different all kinds of ways. We want the children and the elders and seniors. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Hunter Morris.
How y'all doing this evening?
Good evening, Hunter. How are you, sir?
Good evening. All right. My name is Hunter Morris. I'm from Suffolk, Virginia. I, I am, I am speaker tonight on a subject of great, of grave importance to mental health crisis that are affecting every community in our nation. According to the National Allowance on Mental Illness, a mental health crisis is any sus- any situation in which a person's behavior puts them at risk or hurting themselves or others, or prevents them from being available to care for themselves or function in the community. It's important to realize that anyone can experience a mental health crisis according to the American, what's that say? What's that say? I can't read.
Psychological.
Association. Association. The most common indication, indication.
Indication.
Indication that someone is suffering from a mental health crisis is a sudden change in behavior. I bet we all know a, know a friend, family member, or a acquaintance who has, what's that?
Where?
Who?
Where?
Right there.
Oh, family member, oh, ex-husband.
Ex-signs of a mental health crisis. I'm asking you tonight, as you work on your budget, on your budget, to please make fun of those organization that treat and cares for those in our cities who are, who are impacted by illness, one of your properties. And I gotta say this, we don't know what someone is going through behind closed doors. Regardless what's going on, I would like to take a moment of silence for the person who drove off the bridge in Virginia Beach. And I want to say one more thing, too. Mental health crisis is affecting our whole nation. It needs to be more addressed than what it is now, because if not, more people are losing loved ones. I hate to see people losing more loved ones. It's, it's same thing, just like, just like drugs, same thing, just like shooting. Somebody's gonna die every single day. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Merle Rutledge. Sir, if you state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
My name is Merle Rutledge, and due to the fact that I declared for candidacy, I can't give out my address. No disrespect. Right before this meeting, I had a nice conversation with myself to say, what am I here for? And I think, uh, one thing we can all say, we are here to make sure our children have a better life than we do. And more and more, I look all over the city, all over Virginia, I know that they are being let down every single day. I have kids that I know that scared to go to school right now and worried about being shot. I have kids who go to school and can't defend themselves while they get beat up and both get suspended, whether it's the person who's instigating the fight, or the person started it, or the persons who decide to fight back. I see my kids and the kids all around us. Most of them tell us that they are terrified about what's gonna happen tomorrow, because they see what's going on in their households today. The fact is, when we get to this point in life, we have to understand why are we here for? We don't have a future without our kids, so look at what they are going through and what they are seeing and what they are realizing that we are not realizing. We are not giving them the life that's better for them, we giving out the life that's better for us. And I think that's the problem that we have going on right now, that the kids is repeating the mistakes of history instead of what we have done throughout history. And that has become the greatest nation on earth, but we did it because our kids made us great. When our kids is going through what they're going through right now and seeing what this world's becoming, they expect leadership that is relentless, that can lead through a time of crisis, because this is a crisis that they are going through, and y'all need to recognize that they are dealing with the blows as much as y'all dealing with the hits. In order for us to save our kids' lives, we have to see if we are willing to even fight for our own lives, because they're being torn down as much as the parents, because government is raping them. People can't even afford to even go to a grocery store or get some medicine. The kids is seeing that, their kids is hurting, their kids is crying, and those parents is dying. And they dying with their eyes wide open and still breathing. This is happening all over the country, and I hope y'all recognize that. Right now, our kids need us more than ever to put our petty differences aside to do what we do best, not worry about Democrat or Republican, but worry about how our kids will grow up with a future better than ours. They deserve that. We are selfish if we decide that they don't. See, if they grow up the way and in this direction that we are going in, what we seeing all over the streets, the suicides, the overdoses, the bad and reckless decisions, that's gonna be y'all in those seats governing over the rest of us. That's the price we pay. That's the price we pay. So, I hope y'all take this message loud and clearly. Our kids right now are our future, but also at the same timeframe, they depend on us to give them better and to do better and to see us act better. We must act like we care about them, and we must not ignore the obvious signs that we continue to repeat. If crime is up because we are ignoring the riot, crime is gonna be down when we take on the riot and give them a reason to stop screaming in our ears. So God bless you and God bless America.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Kathy, um, help me with the last name, Gindon?
That works. Gindon.
No, Gindon? Okay, I want to say it right. Ms. Gindon. Dr. Gindon.
I feel like this is just a super segue.
Please state your name and address, ma'am, and you will have five minutes.
So my name is Dr. Kathy Gindon.
Could you please bring the micro, microphone closer to your mouth? That's okay.
My name is Dr. Kathy Gindon. I'm the Executive Director at the Airfield 4-H Center in Wakefield, Virginia, Sussex County. And, um, good evening, Mr. Mayor and elected council members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come here and introduce myself to you. I came on as the Executive Director, working for Virginia Cooperative Extension in a one-year temporary capacity. And last September twenty-fifth, Virginia Tech offered me my position in a full-time role. So I am making my rounds to introduce myself and your local, as your local 4-H center, your 4-H youth education camp, your local youth outdoor education opportunity, and your very own Mr. Aaron Martin, who works here in Portsmouth every day, as your local 4-H extension agent. Everything that we do with our programming revolves around positive youth development. And all the speakers who I heard go before me this evening have just made me really excited about being here this evening, because I feel that between Aaron's programs here in the city, our programs being the city, our programs being offered to you, we serve sixteen different jurisdictions in southeast Virginia. The city of Portsmouth's youth come to my center with Aaron at the helm. We've got Cloverbud kids who are youth, who are from city, from the city, were there this summer, who are five to eight years old, came for fishing programs. Aaron brought teens, well, kids for camp that were ages nine to thirteen years old, and youth counselors from the city who were ages fourteen to eighteen as the camp counselors. This is a place, right, one of my goals for the Four-H Center is to build our camp numbers. Our camp numbers were up seventeen percent. Did you pass out my return of investment statement? So in front of you, you will see a return on investment piece of paper that I put together this year to sort of summarize 2023. You will see that big bold number on the left side of the piece of paper. It says Sussex County camper numbers were up one hundred and seventy-seven percent, and it's because so few kids from the county where I work and reside came to camp. And because of the agent last summer, working to increase those numbers, we can have one hundred and seventy-seven percent. I would love for the council, for the citizens of the city, to get behind Aaron and our Four-H camp program, so that that statistic next summer can really beef up the numbers of the youth that it sounds like can really afford to come to camp. Sure, you're gonna learn fishing, you're gonna learn how to canoe, you're gonna have a campfire at night, but the other sneaky part of camp programs is teaching the kids those twenty-first century leadership skills. It's positive youth development. They get a chance to come, to be independent, to make good decisions, to, to be around other kids, to learn how to be resilient, work on a team. It's okay to fail at trying something the first time, and it's not the end of the world. You're teaching that resiliency and accountability of when you make a mistake. The other thing that we have, that it will be new, we hired a new program director full time at the Four-H Center, Mr. Joey Patterson is our program director. In addition to summer camp, we are offering year-round programs. We're doing school field trips during the year. You can see on that flyer that you have in front of you, it was a story very much focusing on the Sussex County School District. Aaron's got a great relationship here in the schools with the city of Portsmouth. We would love to get some groups from the city of Portsmouth out to Airfield for some of these really immersive, engaging educational opportunities, where the kids are learning these good things. We can reduce some of these maybe scary choices that are happening here in the city, showing them, hey, there are other opportunities, there are things you can do with your hands that are more positive for you, more healthy for you. Healthier choices, better choices. I would love for the city to really embark and engage with me on this. I would, I would, just want to make sure I checked my outline here, I covered my three points. We also do have, just as an aside, we have a conferencing and retreat center, so if any of you in the city have an interest for a wedding, a family reunion, you need to have a place to hold a meeting of your own, kind of hidden away, you can also come out to the center. I firmly, thoroughly, genuinely invite you, anytime you're driving down 460, please come in, visit, say hello, I'm there every day, I would love to have you come by and check out our two hundred acres of wood and a hundred acres of fresh water, and I mean that sincerely. Thank you.
Thank, 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 thank you, ma'am. I do have one question for you.
Yes.
Real quick. Do you have, how do you handle special needs children?
So it depends on the situation. We will make every accommodation that we can to have a child with a disability or an ability that's challenging to them or to us to make it happen. We are ADA compliant facility. If it is an individual who has to have, like, the chaperone or a guardian come to camp with them, that is permissible. And we also have, actually new this year, we have some extra training that's happening for the staff around the state of Virginia to help in some of those more kind of behavioral situations, so that we know how to better handle it ourselves as professionals.
Thank you very much.
Uh huh.
And we, and we do have one more item that we need the city interim city manager to mention to everyone.
I just wanted to remind everybody of the Coldest Night Walk. It's a five K walk, and it's scheduled for February the twenty-fourth. We, the city actually walked as a team last year, and you can still register with Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless. The schedule real quick is four PM is check-in and welcome, and again, the start is right here at eight oh one Crawford Street in the plaza, on the plaza. Five PM, the move, the move send-off. Six PM is a lunch meal served. Seven PM is goodbye. So, um, please come out, you can register online with Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless and register you or your team to walk with us on February twenty-fourth. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And if there is no other business for the good of the order, that means our meeting is adjourned. Drive safe and have a good evening, and Happy Valentine's Day to everyone.